Good evening. Welcome to our September meeting. We've got probably a long night ahead of us and some really important stuff to go through. So we'll get right on it. Let's just take a real quick look at the agenda for the evening. And then we'll get into the minutes and proceed. So we've got public comment that will come right after approval of minutes. If anybody would like to speak for a few minutes, please sign up at the podium. The chair has a number of items of business to include formal complaint updates, update on the principal selection committee, collective bargaining task force update, facility task force reorganization, and a check-in on the annual goals. Our new executive director will have an update on a number of topics to include enrollment and attrition, our MCAS and AP results, as well as recommendations on improved communication practices. We've got Ms. Diane Hammer here, who will be reporting on a third-party task force that we asked her to conduct to really assess culture and management practices within the school. And we've reserved 40 minutes for that, so it's quite a lengthy presentation and discussion that I think lots of you are here for. We're anxious to hear the results and have a good frank discussion about opportunities for improvement. We've got the finance committee with a monthly update, governance committee, and then followed by education committee, fundraising. We're now asking the parent representative and the faculty representative to give a report each week, so we'll start that off this month. And then we will go into executive session, and I need to read these words, "for strategy with respect to collective bargaining and to conduct contract negotiations with non-represented personnel." And we will not reconvene after executive session, and we will then go home. So any updates to the agenda? All right. Please, boards, take a look at the minutes from the last meeting.
Okay. Could you announce that this meeting is being recorded?
Okay. Yes, and the meeting is being video recorded. I think we're required by public law to announce that. Thank you, Ross.
Motion to approve the minutes of August 28?
Is there a second? Roger? All in favor? Those opposed? Motion passes. Minutes are approved. Comment.
So first, I would comment is Ms. Nancy Sinicola.
My name is Nancy Sinicola, and I used to work here. On May 19, 2014 -- can anyone hear me? I sent a letter to AMSA and the AMSA Board of Trustees requesting salaries and site records for the years 2011 to 2012, 2012 to 2013, and 2013 to 2014, to record pending to now to choose its public records law. AMSA responded in a manner such that it was unclear if they would provide these public records or if they would deny the request by citing a specific exception allowed by the law. Therefore, I filled the matter to the Office of the Secretary of the Commonwealth. On August 29, the supervisor of records at the Office of the Secretary of the Commonwealth left a voicemail message for the school attorney, Edwin F. Landers, which indicated, one, that AMSA's estimate of 16 hours of labor to produce the information was credible, and that they charged to me of $276.96 for the work plus $3 for the copies requested, and, two, that AMSA must supply requested documents. Both attorney Landers and I received a letter to the same effect. Attorney Landers received his letter on September 16, and AMSA had 10 days in which to produce the documents or respond with an explanation. On September 22, Mr. Landers indicated in an email to me that AMSA might submit a response regarding whether AMSA was subject to disclosure under the public records law. I did not hear back from attorney Landers until yesterday, September 29. At that point, he indicated that the preparations of documents had cost more than the estimate, but that the school would accept the amount originally cited. Yesterday, I went to the AMSA business office to hand over my check for $279.96 and retrieve the documents I had requested on May 19. I stayed in the office and opened the envelope. The documents do list salary and site and amounts, but employee names have been removed. When I noticed this to the business office manager, Nancy Coninsky, she stated that the school attorney had told her to redact names since names were not specified in the request. I asked for my check back, and Ms. Coninsky returned eject to me. I left the documents on her desk. I've sent a letter to attorney Laurie Sullivan at the Office of the Secretary of the Commonwealth asking that the case be reopened. I spoke with her on the phone today, and she confirmed that I should not have specified the inclusion of names. She has asked the supervisor of records to reopen the case. We all know that school districts and towns publish the names of employees and their salaries every year. AMSA and its attorneys are aware that implicit in a request the salary information would be the names attached to those salaries. Should I next specify that salary information should be provided in Arabic numerals, not Roman words? Must I specify days ten? Must I specify paper documents and not play tablets? This is a mockery of the public records law. I bring this matter to the board and to the public for several reasons. First, the parents and teachers of the school deserve to know how legal fees are spent, fighting against compliance with the public records law, even when directed to do so by the state supervisor of records. Second, the parents and teachers should also know that the Board of Trustees and Dr. Demello are completely aware of this behavior, because I included them on the emails I exchanged with attorney Landers over the past few days. In addition, I question why I was allowed to take back my check for $279.96. AMSA has told the Secretary of the Commonwealth that these records are stored off-site and that it would take at least 16 hours to gather the information. Would it take that long if the DESE needed the information? Weren't all contracts written on a school computer before being printed? Doesn't the school use an outsourced payroll company? Aren't salaries paid through electronic direct deposit? In other words, isn't there an accessible electronic record? The state supervisor of records has no reason to question the explanation for 16-plus hours of labor, but I question it and would like a response to those questions above. Someone in a three-person business office wasn't available for more than two days last week because that person apparently was collecting information from files in the storage unit. AMSA says he spent over $280 on labor costs, yet the business manager handed my check back to me without batting an eyelash. Really? You spent that time and money, and suddenly I'm not responsible anymore for the effort and expense I requested? The law was very clear that AMSA did not even have to start working on the documents until they had my check in hand, and yet they were ready at a moment's notice. I ask that AMSA provide the documents requested with names provided as they are in any other school district in this Commonwealth in a timely manner and with a good face charge for the actual labor. I ask that AMSA stop spending public money on legal fees and expending state money by involving the attorneys at the Office of the Secretary of the Commonwealth any further in a fight that ultimately will result in the release of the complete documents. I bring this matter to the board and the public in an effort to hold people accountable that are high principles upon which AMSA was founded and the virtues of honesty, transparency, and accountability that anyone who professes to care of education ought to cherish. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sinicola. So we'll move into chair business. There are a couple of formal complaints to update on. One of those involves allegations of harassment, and that is underway. There's been two discussions. This was filed in August. There's been two discussions. It's not yet resolved, and we're working on it. So more to follow after an interview today with the affected party. And Roger, is there an update on our other outstanding complaint?
On the other outstanding complaint, I think you have the dates in plenty more than I do. We're still -- due to other board business, we're still -- we're ready to schedule initial interview and are exchanging emails with the complaint to find a mutually convenient time to do so.
Okay.
Which complaint is that, Roger? I'm sorry. Is that the same as the harassment or different?
It's a different one.
Different one.
There's a wrongful termination complaint.
Oh, okay, thank you.
And there's a harassment complaint. They're noted in the minutes from last time. So I think, Roger, refresh this on our requirements to pursue these complaints. I think they've changed in the last few months.
Well, the requirements on the complaints is that we get an initial response to the complaint within 45 days of filing the complaint. And then, as a board, we continue to provide updates on the status of all open complaints until they are resolved. It typically runs two to six months, depending upon the complexity of the complaint.
Okay. And we're in compliance with those two -- for these two complaints with the 45-day -- 45-day initial response?
We have completed the initial response in regards to the harassment complaint. We would have until October 9 or 10, I've got the calendar, to complete the 45-day response for the wrongful termination complaint.
Okay.
So can I ask, the 45 days, is that just you have 45 days to say, "We got your complaint," or like in those 45 days are you doing -- are you investigating?
We are -- in prime time, we are starting the investigation. We would send the summary to the complainant of where we have reached the 45 days.
So it's not like you have 45 days to solve it?
No.
Okay.
It used to be more restrictive, as I understand, in terms of we had --
I believe the older -- yeah, the older one was 30 days, but the current -- the current rules are responsive in 45 days.
Okay. All right. And now we will have an update from the principal selection committee. And I don't know, Roger or Mary Ann, if you all wanted to provide the update.
Nancy, if Nancy was here -- Nancy, since you're the chair of the committee, would you want to provide the update?
Sure. We actually just met, and we have narrowed it down to six candidates that the committee will be calling in to interview. And then from there, we'll narrow it down to finalists. And that's where we stand. So we hope to do the interviews next week.
We anticipate to remain on our timeline, which was the hope that we will be announcing, assuming we find a candidate that we feel is an appropriate fit for AMSA, that we would be announcing that person probably Halloween, 31st.
So what is the process? You guys are interviewing as a search committee and then presenting finalists to Dr. Demello? And input from other community members?
Yes. So what's the -- so in the initial screening process and in the initial interviews, which are all confidential, those are handled by that principal search screening committee. Once they have gone through their interview process and determined finalists, those finalists will then come to me as a recommendation for further interviews. And at that point, we'll have a series of opportunities for students, staff, and the community to meet the three candidates. We'll have a candidate night. We have all of those, an outline of those dates, you know, sort of set up, so we're good to go. That will be happening the week before, the two weeks, I think, before the end of October. No, because we're hoping an announcement by October 31 for a finalist with anticipated time for that person, if they're in a current position, to be able to complete their requirements there for their contract, so that we're hoping somebody would be able to start on the first of the year.
Great. Could I offer a -- I was a part of the committee until the end of August, and I need to drop off the schedule and reasons, but I just wanted to thank all of you. It's a great group, and I think we've done a great job. You know, things are kind of tense this summer, so it wasn't easy to do that, but it was a really tremendous, tremendous process, and people really, you know, really did a really nice job. So.
Thank you, Chris. All right. Our next item in chair business is the collective bargaining task force update. And our task force is comprised of Allison and Tom for now, and we are -- would you all like to give the update just to where we are? Want to do it?
We have a initial meeting with the teacher representatives tomorrow, and that's where the update's in, this morning.
Basically a meet and greet.
With the union representatives?
Right.
Yeah, okay. And out of that, at some point in the next few weeks, there'll be timelines drawn up and next steps.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. The next item we have is the facility task force. Refresh if there's new board members. This is a task force that was designed to work on our couple of different facility issues, namely the lawsuit and other matters as they relate to the facilities. This was originally formed and put under the ED as a task force, given that the ED was very involved at the time. So it's proposed that we move this task force back into a task force of the board, because I think it's going to be functioning more closely with board business over the next few months. So I don't know, I don't believe we need a vote on that, but just a notification that the task force, which hasn't been that active in the last few months because it's been a quiet period with lawsuits and facility issues in general, we're going to bring it back to the board now so that we can kind of gear up for hopefully further actions in the next few months.
How about confidentiality issues?
We have --
Because of the lawsuit?
There are much of the work of this task force has to do with the lawsuit, and for the work that has to do with the lawsuit, that is privileged conversation. Allison, you could --
Privileged communications, sorry.
Privileged communications. So when the lawyers are involved, that is protected information that can't be shared until the lawsuit has been completed. So much of this work kind of remains behind that cloak because it has to do with lawsuits. But there's some of it that may not, and that would be public information.
So who is that task force?
That task force --
Task force is Craig, Tom, and Allison.
Okay. Any questions? All right. And then we wanted to do a quarterly check-in on annual goals. Polly, do we have this in a slide?
We do. What's it on the left? Hold my hand.
So just for the board, we established annual goals, and what we agreed last year to do was look at them every quarter to make sure that we're having them in mind and tracking towards them.
Very interested. Now we'll move on.
We can come back. Okay. So we have up in front of us Mary Ann's executive director's report, so I'll just turn it over to you if that's okay.
Sure. So I want to take you through some of the things that are part of our, you know, that appear on the agenda, but also some various updates as part of my report to you folks about things that have been happening. So the first thing I'll mention is we talked about the importance of communication and part of the communication plans that would be coming forward. And so one of those is to start coffee hours. And a little bit of a different format, I understand, perhaps in the past, there've been some free questions and things have been submitted, but I'm sort of just taking the approach of going in and just chatting with folks and having people have an opportunity to talk and ask questions and start to have some good conversations. So we had our first one this morning at 8:00. I'm happy to say we had about 48 parents maybe coming. And so these are not by any stretch all of the things that we talked about, but it gives you a little bit of an idea. We talked about the vision and future of AMSA and how that will be working out with the strategic planning and the accountability plan through the board work, about technology and how that may play a role in the future of AMSA, global education, conversations around stress and reducing stress and finding balance. And those are also important conversations we've been having with the staff and with our guidance. And you'll be hearing more about that because it really is a growing concern, the number of our students who are thinking about hurting themselves or are hurting themselves or suffering from depression. So we're going to be giving that attention in our professional development work, and I hope to be able to say that we'll be offering some programs for parents as well that they can attend to work on that. We talked about, you know, the concepts of flipped classrooms, outreach to core communities. We are increasing, we're adding -- the Beacon? Somebody help me. Beacon, is that the Maynard paper?
Beacon Villager.
The Beacon?
Beacon Villager.
The Beacon Villager, thank you very much. Because it's my understanding we weren't advertising that, and Maynard is one of our core communities that really wasn't receiving some of that outreach. So we're trying, we've gone over carefully who we're reaching out to, especially in our core communities. So we're adding to that. The concept that we have a collective voice as educators, parents, and students together. We do a lot in separation, but one gentleman, and I apologize, I don't know his name, but made a very good point about getting all three groups around the table at one time and sharing some conversation there. And I think there'll be more to follow. We have students who have some ideas about creating their own sort of board of directors and then sending a representative to us that I think will be a terrific thing for us to follow up on. And I just want to let folks know that we'll be meeting again tomorrow evening. If people couldn't make it this morning, we'll be meeting at 5:00 tomorrow evening. Also, it was asked, and it's not up here, but it was asked if we could have department chairs attend some of these so that folks could have a chance to ask some questions, maybe that are a little bit more detailed to content. And so we will be making that happen in the future for sure. I want to make you aware of something that we're going to be doing with our students. Our goal is to have every student, within a year's time, receive a baseline impact testing, concussion testing. And so right now, we have our athletes that are being tested, but it would be really helpful for parents if all of our students could have that baseline. And because it's not that expensive, it's something we want to offer. So the test is good for two years, and it costs the district about a dollar a test, so it's pretty cost-effective for what we can gain from it and help in a health way. We're going to be testing this year grades 6, 8, 10, and 12. That will be starting, I believe, this month is our target to start. And then next year, we'll repeat those same grades, but of course, because everyone's shifting up a grade, we'll then be hitting everybody within a year's time. The exception is athletes. All athletes will be tested this year to ensure that we have a baseline for those students. So it'll cost about $500 a year for 500 students, and that includes about 250 -- oh, sorry, that should not be a dollar sign there. It includes about 250 retests for students so that if a student has a head injury, we're able to retest them to determine if there's a change from their baseline. We'll be conducting this on Saturday because we need the computer labs, and it takes about anywhere from an hour to an hour and a half to do the testing. So we're planning about four and a half hours over the course of a Saturday to complete this. But I think it's an important health component for our students, so I'm excited that -- and working this to Albuquerque to make sure that we have this happen.
Can parents opt out of it?
Yes, absolutely. It's, you know, something that we're going to offer. Thank you for the question. The question was, can parents opt out? And of course they can. It's a health-related thing. We hope it will be helpful, but obviously, if you don't want your child to participate, you certainly do not have to. Through this presentation, I'm kind of taking some kind of light things and then some heavier data-type things because I don't want you to fall asleep when I get to the data parts, you know? So we'll mix it up. And just to let you know, some of the things that we're starting to do to make some changes. So one of them is around journalism. I was approached by Steve Smith and Lino Alvarez about bringing a program to ASMA -- AMSA, ASMA. I'm in the health road. To AMSA that will allow our students to publish in a more authentic environment. Right now, when they're publishing their journal articles, the layout doesn't really mirror the kind of layout that is actually being used in sort of real-world journalism. So I'm excited that we're going to be able to bring that to them.
So is it for paper publishing as well as web publishing?
It's for web publishing.
Oh, it's for web publishing?
Yes, so that they can have it go out and have a look that really mirrors what's happening in real-world media outlets.
And this is part of just the journalism class?
That's where we're starting with it, to start it as part of the journalism class. But, you know, once we acquire the software, I'm hopeful we'll be able to use it in some other venues as well.
Some of the web classes.
Is there a school newspaper? Does it have it? I'm asking, it does seem to have a school newspaper.
This is it.
Oh, this is it?
Yeah, I was going to say, I know that we also have students, which I believe is separate, that work with Maureen Evans. Maybe somebody can help me if I'm wrong on this.
Yeah.
To publish to our website, to put products out there as well, for articles.
But it might be part of this class as well.
Yeah, I believe so, that the journalism class puts together, it's just an online, it's not a print thing. But it'll have a different online look now, I think, is the idea. There's also a literary magazine, but that's very separate.
Is it The Voice?
That's The Quill.
Oh, The Quill.
Am I right on that, Lisa?
The Voice.
The Voice.
AMSA Voice. Yeah. Good to know you're there. Now I know where I can go. Thank you. So here comes some of the data information. So one of the reports that I believe is something annually that's brought to your attention is our enrollment. So right now, the head count is 999 students, and this includes the incoming sixth graders, which totaled 138 students. So last year, we had a total of 101 seniors graduate. Potential withdrawals for this year stand at around 20, and that's based on students who have maybe applied in another location for a different school and are waiting to hear from that for decisions. But I believe the next slide gives you a little bit of detail right now, enrollment and attrition. So three students for transportation issues, one for academic challenge was difficult, no one for saying that it was too easy, relocation, nine students for sports and activities, three for reasons that expectations were not met, three personal and other reasons, 10, and no one for homeschool. Is that of just the 20 that are considering leaving now? I believe that, well, that exceeds that, so it's more than that, so that's not.
Twenty-nine students.
Is this last year's?
Sarah, do you know what that --
The data we have, the report we have this, 29 rooted to last.
So that's the 29 at the beginning. Okay, thank you.
Is there any way to get more detail on the personal and other? I think that with that 10 being the big number, that seems like a place where we need to find some information.
We do, and Mr. McIntyre may be able to clarify for this. We do exit interviews, correct, with families, so I'm sure we can get, we would have more information about some of that. I'm not sure all of that could necessarily be, or should necessarily be, shared publicly, but yes, we do do exit interviews for our internal understanding.
Okay, I think it's one of the things we talked about. Ed committee basically understands what that exit interview process is for our own benefit.
Yes, there is an exit interview that's down the line. There's archive of that. We can share that with you, and we may be able to adjust this to that.
I'm glad my name's not on there. Reason they left.
Bowen.
Bowen.
That might be the other.
That might be the other guy we've got to follow. Okay. This is something different. So we're still on the enrollment, but it's shifting to the lottery component as well and specifically around the fact that there have been new regulations that have been released around how you do a lottery and what your enrollment practices need to be in terms of wait lists and so on. And so we currently have a policy. What we are looking to do is take that current policy, interject the changes in the law, which will What we are looking to do is take that current policy, interject the changes in the law, which we're going to talk about tonight. But the rest of the policy, we want to do some cleaning up so that the language is more aligned with the exact language of some of the laws. So, we're doing it, but we just wanted to kind of have that phraseology so it matches a little bit better. And then, the other piece of it is, in my time coming onboard, I've had various questions from parents and folks about the process. And as I read it and I was trying to understand it and then talk about it with some of the staff, I think we've come to the understanding that we could do a better job at wording how the lottery process occurs. So, not changing the process, but doing a better job of explaining in our policy how it actually occurs so that perhaps we can head off some of the questions that we get from folks if we just provide a little bit more clarity. So, what I'd like to ask of the board tonight, because we want to be able to start, you know, we have our advertisements out and more coming and we want to be able to start the application process and start the visits and so on. So, what we would like tonight is see if the board could take action on adding to the current policy simply the new laws that appear. And then, between now and the next board meeting, we will take the policy and update some of the language for clarity and then you will vote on the full new change at the end of the month at the next meeting.
So, board, you've got the policy packet here and items in red are?
It's not in all our packets.
Hopefully, it was in your packet, but if it's not, is that the one Sarah emailed?
Sarah did email.
So, it has been emailed to you, but I believe there was.
It can have.
There was, or some that were supposed to also go on the packets. But if we missed you, we apologize. But it should have been certainly in an email fashion. But I can tell you very quickly, the application process has been, the enrollment process has been expanded so that it's not just taking in grades six through eight before, but you can actually have applications out for grades six through nine. So, that's a bit of a change. And the other part is that there was a deadline. I believe we had applications close something like December 17th previously. And now, by law, it has to be after January 1st. So, we'll be closing, I believe, our date on January 2nd. That still gives us lots of time, sufficient time hopefully, to be able to get everything in because the actual lottery has to take place by March 1st. So, those are the key changes that are in the law, so we have to do it anyway. But we want our current policy to reflect those changes. So, I was just hoping that we could get, after any questions, get a vote from the board to have those items amended.
Did the March 1st date change? Because don't we usually submit?
Excuse me, it says, I can tell you the actual language on page three. Reasonable public notice is given at least one week prior to the lottery date, held no later, sorry, it wasn't March 1st, no later than March 15 of each year. I apologize, that's wrong up there. So, no later than March 15 of each year.
And how does that align with what we need to report? We need to report our enrollment, sorry, I can't.
So, if you're thinking of SIMS data enrollment?
Yes, I think that's.
Okay, so SIMS enrollments are October 1. And then, you have another additional enrollment on, I believe it's February 1.
The pre-enrollment.
Yeah, so I think that a lot of, that was what drove some of the process. So, it doesn't really give you a lot of time to do that.
Takes two weeks away.
Well, we don't, I think what they're saying though is that we have to keep the applications open until January 1st and then we have to conduct the lottery before March 15.
That doesn't mean we couldn't choose to conduct the lottery January 3rd.
Oh, that's correct. And so, our intent is to, the only thing we really are intending to change in our procedures at this point is the mandatory change out extending the application timeline. But we're still looking at the late January, early February timeframe for the lottery, which is the timeframe we've been traditionally, it's my understanding, been conducting those.
I don't have a paper copy of the.
I don't even mean that we're going.
That's confused.
Well, a part of this whole, this whole chart will change.
Because my understanding is a lot of times, the registrar also has to kind of look at the verification. And that's what actually takes the time, not the lottery. Verifying that, you know.
Address verification.
Yeah, people actually live where they say they live.
Has everybody been able to see a copy now? You see the red text, which is.
Does she need to talk?
You say D or A?
I'm looking at it.
It's not that much.
But the changes really, again, there are some other changes that you see where a 101, which was a reference in the law, may have been shifted to a 1.05 or something. But the meat of it, the two changes, are those reflected there, although again, that, it's a March 15 date, not a March.
Excuse me, the changes were in the document that was emailed to us.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm good. You're ready.
I'm sorry, can you clarify what the SIMS thing is? I don't know what that was.
Well, that's not related to this, but she just happened to ask a question about what, well, SIMS is Student Information Management System and every, that's, you have to collect data on student attendance and other student data and then every year, the state asks for you to submit that information to the state and that deadline is October 1st. So, it's not related to this, but it was a question.
I would just note, before you put this on the web tomorrow, that the date on the header, it doesn't work.
The date on the header. Well, actually, it has been. No, actually, so that is currently the correct.
Oh, because that's what.
As of, because that's, so remember, although you're making a change tonight so that folks are aware of it, the reality is, we have an existing policy that dates to that and that's the current one that DESE has that is approved. If we don't put this in tonight, the reality is, we have to follow it because it's now the law anyway. But I think that what we have on the website, we want it to reflect the updated legal changes and then the other types of edits that we want to put through, we'll bring to the next board meeting.
So, this will go into effect for the class that comes in next fall?
Yes, yes, for our upcoming process.
But the lottery process starts tomorrow.
Starts tomorrow, right, yes. The application process starts tomorrow, yep.
So, I'd like to make a motion to approve the changes to the enrollment policy as presented by the administration.
Allison has a second. All in favor? Those opposed? Motion passes? Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
One comment on this? I'd like, since it's a document that we, I'd like to get this document up on the web underneath, either within the board minutes or separate, in a separate place so that it's.
It will definitely appear at the registrars where they have the information about our policy and the lottery. Absolutely.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, so, I know that culture and professional development are things that are on folks' minds. So, one of the things, I think it's nice when you see teachers taking initiative, just to give some examples of things that are happening. So, one thing is that Steve Smith had written and said, I'd like to have a book read with the staff. And so, he selected a book, Blood Meridian, based on historical events, you know, in Texas and Mexico. But the point is, it gives the teachers an opportunity to get together and chat about some professional things and I like it because it's teacher-generated. It comes from them. So, just want to give you folks some ideas of some of the things that happened. Also, I've been getting a lot of questions related to budget and things we're doing. So, again, just to start to give you splatterings of some things that are happening, things around inventory. This year, thanks to some folks in-house who want to make sure we had textbook inventory taking place, all our textbooks are being inventoried this year. But since then, I've also asked that all of our technology devices be inventoried, all of our science equipment, basically anything that can hold a barcode. And I think that will really help us as we start to get into our budget process later this year where we'll have a really good sense of exactly what we have and what's being used, what's not being used. And I think it's always a good starting point to understanding what you're using. Other types of things we're doing, some of you may be familiar with the 1080 Club. It was actually in our, as part of our curriculum and a course previously. But I'm happy to say Jeremy Morris has now secured sponsorship for it. We've shifted it into an after-school program. The cost of the program last year was about $34,000 and this year, we've moved, sorry, it should be 1080, to an after-school club and we are now kind of embracing the true curricular focus, which is that it's working like a student-owned business. So, the students are going to be focusing on fundraising, business management and engineering and design concepts. So, all the STEM concepts behind a racing team. And so, the cost of the program is going to be zero this year. So, we're happy about opportunities to save money like this. We have sponsors who are helping out. And something I think is fantastic is, you know, we placed nationally for two years at AMSA and so now, we're taking our skills and our students are becoming leaders and teachers for other districts. So, Everett's wanting to start a program and our kids are going to be providing the expertise to another school district. And I think it's a fantastic lesson in leadership. And so, I'm really excited about bringing this component to the program. A couple of other shout-outs I want to talk about. The junior Halloween festival days are coming up. The junior class is sponsoring. We may have had it last year with the Halloween trick-or-treat coming, but they're going to add some other activities to it to make it a festival. And also, sort of in the spirit of culture and hoping to make our sixth graders have an opportunity to bond as a new class, we're going to be doing a pumpkin carving with the sixth graders after school on the Wednesday, which is October 29. All the sixth graders, we're hoping, as many will participate after school as possible, will carve pumpkins. Those pumpkins will then stay, or by the way, they'll be assisted by their mentors, we're hoping their older classmates mentors. The pumpkins will stay overnight and then the next day, they'll be in the cafeteria, lower school, on display. Will darken the room, so it'll be kind of one of those nice walk-through events. And it will be with part of the junior festival day. So, now you're kind of combining both events for that and I think it'll be a nice outing for folks and bring some kids together.
And you're going to give sixth graders knives?
It's a great question, so like that. So, just so we can calm folks down a little bit, that wasn't planned, it's a great question. So, some of you, I hate to do, you know, announce, but there are products out there. Pumpkin Masters happens to be one that makes a lot of carving tools. So, what we're going to do is adults will have the big knives during the day and will, in that day, we will cut the tops out and then pass the pumpkin on to juniors and seniors volunteers who will be coming during their study periods to come out and help gut the pumpkins and clean them out so that when the students, sixth graders, come in the afternoon, it's just the shell of the pumpkin. The biggest part of the mess will be gone. And then, the students have, and will get very good lessons on safety, but they have very tiny carving tools that they can use to make pretty amazing and intricate designs. So, we're excited about that. But it will be, it will be safe. And the senior picnic that usually occurs in the spring, we wanted again to create some opportunities for the seniors to bond at a little bit of an earlier time in the year and break up all the extra hecticness at the end of the year. So, we'll be offering that on October 14. A couple of other shout-outs I just want to give to is the soccer. We had our first soccer event under the lights and happy to say, we saw over 110 kids there. For those of you who may have gone, it was a terrific night. We came really, really close, but didn't quite pull it off. It was a really nice event to see that many kids supporting athletics. And when you think about where you were a few years ago and where you are now, to have fans like that, it was pretty amazing. We also had a 5K road race, a little bit mixed up, so maybe it wasn't quite 5K, but it was, the spirit for a 5K was certainly there. And the great thing is, it was all about bringing the community together. And so, we had 143 runners come out. We had terrific sponsorship. We want to thank the local businesses that helped to sponsor that event and to help celebrate our 10th anniversary. Back into some meat types of things. Professional development, just again, I know it's something that's important to the board, so I want to let you know some of the kinds of things that we're doing. We have department chairs and some teachers that'll be going to the Massachusetts Computer Using Educators Conference, which is a big collaborative conference between MasQ and the MASSS, which is the Superintendents Association. They have a very large technology conference at Gillette Stadium, so we'll have some folks going there over the course of two days. We've also created a partnership with Primary Source. They're leaders in global education. It's an organization out of Watertown and they promote history and humanities by connecting educators with people and cultures worldwide. So, we have several educators signed up for various courses and webinars and seminars with them throughout the year. I'll be offering a professional development study tour to Costa Rica in February and I believe we have at least six of our educators signed up already and there'll be educators from other districts that we'll be collaborating with for that program. Charter school orientation for some of the administrators that is being offered by DESE that we're going to. And then, just to give you an idea, so this Friday, we're having a professional development day. We have 50, sorry, 25% approximately of our teachers that are continuing their research for better teaching programming that they started last year. The rest of the staff will be doing some common ground activity, which is, I don't want to let the cat out of the bag now, but it's just, there's a little bit of things that will help generate some conversation with our teachers, again, helping to bring the staff together and starting to lay some of the groundwork for having deeper conversations about where we want to be heading in the future. What do we want AMSA, what direction do we want AMSA to be taking? And setting a little bit of a framework for the strategic plan and the accountability plan. Teachers will be sharing tips on efficiency and teaching strategies. And then, finally, they'll also have an opportunity to do some independent, individualized learning of their choice. So, I think it'll be a nice kind of combination of opportunities. So, here comes some MCAS. So, I just want to point out, we're kind of doing the 10,000-foot view tonight. At the next meeting, we'll have our department heads here to be able to talk about the details of our MCAS and AP results, but we could just kind of have a little bit of an overview right now because I know the results have been out and some people have started to see some things in the newspaper and so on. So, for science, technology and engineering, you can see that we're ranking 10th out of 276 districts across the state in our eighth grade and third in the 10th grade. I think it's a real credit to AMSA to see, you know, in that warning category and have no students there. I can tell you, coming from, you know, the traditional public schools, there aren't many that are pulling off stats like that. So, that's something to feel really pretty proud of and pretty amazing to do that. And also, just how many students are scoring in the proficient advanced. What this doesn't show you is the detail about, you know, how many of those, for example, 24 students that are in needs improvement are on the cusp of moving into the proficient category. So, but again, that's, those are some scores to feel pretty good about. In mathematics, again, I want to read through everything for folks who may have a harder time seeing it from where you are, but the sixth grade in math, we're scoring 24th out of 314 states in the district across the Commonwealth. Seventh grade, 10th. In eighth grade, we're ranking 11th and in 10th grade, we're ranking 4th. Again, for me, looking at those needs improvement and warning columns and to see how many students are, you know, are in there is pretty low. But, you know, throughout the state, if you look at data across all the scores in every school, there's always a dip, for example, in the eighth grade in here across the state. So, it's not just specific to us, but I think we're the, you know, the rubber meets the road, so to speak. When you look at the 10th grade and you're looking at 96% in the advanced and then three in proficient. So, that, I mean, it gives us a total of 99, but the reality is 96 in the advanced, not in the proficient category. It's amazing, it's amazing, so, you know.
Like they gave us the right thing.
It's what?
It's like they gave us the right name.
Yeah. So, it's really, it's really fantastic. And so, you know, you really need to, if you get a chance, when you see a teacher, please reach out and thank them for the hard work that they're doing with their students. And not only that, you know, your kids are busting every single day. I've seen the focus. They need to be thanked as well because they're working really hard and they take their academics very seriously. And so, this really is a tribute to the students and staff here. And we know the parents at home checking that new Portal Plus to see that the homework's done. We won't forget you either. So, ELA MCAS scores, sixth grade, we're ranking 28th, seventh grade, 6th, eighth grade, 10th. And then, finally, in 10th grade, again, first out of 290 districts. And again, you know, looking at the number of students in the warning and needs improvement categories are just so impressive. So, just fantastic. So, our AP data, year to year, these reflect the AP averages and, you know, I'm not sure going down the list is great, but I think if we just take a few minutes and have folks get a chance to take a look, it's good to see, you know, that across the years, really, we're either improving or holding our own on it. we're either improving or holding our own on it. And I think that's pretty impressive.
For people who don't know, a perfect score is five. The AP scores are ranked just one, two, three, four, and five. Thank you.
And so one final thing I think I wanted to mention is, other things that have been brought to my attention are things I've been trying to point out in this presentation tonight to give you a flavor of a lot of different kinds of things. Another thing we want to try to do, of course, is create more opportunities for our students to have experiential learning, to be able to go out and make, have partnerships with business and industry. And I don't want to give a big shout out to Water Fresh, because I don't, I don't get any free stuff from them, although I'd like to, because they were really good. But they were down the road from me in Hopkinton, so I happened to get to know them a little bit in my previous district and was able to hook up Dr. Jurey with the owner there and thrilled to find out that when he went with Mr. Brand, how does his name, Brandy's? I know Chris, but.
Brandez.
Brandez. They got chatting with the owner, Jeff, and come to find out, he started to share some of the challenges that he's having in his hydroponics farm. And so that kind of, you know, triggered the bell with our teachers. And so now, we're looking at over seven opportunities for our students to possibly do research to help solve some of their problems around, you can see the mildew and vertical space issues and energy consumption, and really feel like we'll be able to do some research and partnering with them that will improve their business and their conditions and give our kids an opportunity to be doing authentic, project-based work. So I think it's a, it's a good, I think, starting example of some of the things we want to be able to increase in AMSA. We've been doing it, but the more we can increase it, I think, the better. So, a little bit longer, but a little bit of a flavor, I hope, of some of the different things that are happening. So, thank you.
The only question I have for this one right here is, I'm sure, you know, from the parent or the student perspective, how do they become involved? Because sometimes, you know, we hear about these opportunities that's offered to a specific class. Is it going to be an extracurricular?
Yeah, right now, I believe that the way they're going to be tackling, well, I don't think it's all been ironed out, but I know it creates opportunities for some work in the sustainability course, some possibly in the CAD course, and what was the other one? And then some, might have just been in a biology, I'm not sure what the third one was, but, yeah. But we're looking at them in both instances, like the 1080 is an example of reaching out in ways that are after school, but in other ways where we can really just merge it with the curriculum. So, both, I would say, is going to be the answer moving forward.
Thank you very much, Mary Ann. Any other questions for Amy? So, we're moving on into the chair discussion item, which is what a lot of us are here for. And this is really to get a readout from Diana Hammer, and I'm going to ask Rick to do the introductions.
Sure. So, all right, great. So as folks may recall, back in mid-spring, we in the board assembled a assessment task force, a task force to really look at the climate in the school among employees. And that was brought up, the benefit of that was that we were hearing things brought up by teachers, by employees in general, by parents. And we as a board really didn't know the degree, the breadth, the depth, that some of those issues really, or I should say, how prevalent those issues were, or how deep they were, how wide they were. And so we decided to engage with Diana Hammer, connected to Greatness and some of her colleagues, to do some in-depth interviewing, surveying of the employees throughout the school to get a really clear view of what was happening, and both quantitatively and qualitatively. And Diana has completed that. She's going to be sharing a summary of her findings. And I wanted to share also, before she goes through that, we've got about 30 to 40 minutes to have her share that, but also to have some questions. That's actually not enough time to get into all the real depth of what she found. And so, actually, if you wouldn't mind, so what we are going to do is we're going to have two follow-up sessions also. Deep dive sessions, one for employees, and we're going to work with Mary Ann to coordinate that. And one with parents, where we can have a couple hours to allow folks to look at the data in more detail, understand what's actually going on in certain areas, have an opportunity to ask questions, because there won't be an opportunity today. And also, an opportunity to share recommendations, big picture, strategic recommendations on how to potentially address some of the concerns and issues. Now, having said that, I want to say, you know, Mary Ann has joined, Dr. DeBella has joined, and several of the issues, just by her presence, her leadership, some of the things she's doing, have been addressed. Others are of the nature that they're somewhat more systemic. Some of them have to deal with how the DOT, the Board, deals with the, works with the administration. Some of them deal with other issues. And so, we want to make sure we're going to give an opportunity for everybody to look at the details of the findings and also bring high-level recommendations, and those are what those deep dive sessions are going to be for. I'm going to share a little bit more about that after Diana speaks, and also share a little bit more about some proposed next steps that the board's been, would like to take. With that, Diana, if you wouldn't mind?
Thank you, Greg. I thank you to the board for being here, and thank you for the parents, staff members, and community members that are here today. As Rick said, I'm going to be giving you a summary. Please, keep my back. I'm going to be giving you a.
Could you put the mic up just a little bit, please?
Just put it close to your car.
We can move the podium.
If you'd like.
Do you want to?
There would be a good place.
Do you want to go toward that corner?
Look at the technology we have.
Mobile.
It's better? Is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay. As Rick said, I'm going to be giving you a quick summary of what is a 58-page report. So I'm just filling it down, and if I talk fast, it's because I want to get a lot of information in. What I'd like to be able to do is just give you a quick overview of the objectives of the assessment, as well as my methodology for choosing the people that we, that I spoke to and my colleagues spoke to, and then just give you a summary of the results with the strengths and accomplishments that were reported, along with AMSA's climate, weaknesses, opportunities for improvement, some survey things, and then in doubt with some highlighted recommendations. I will say that, well, I want to thank the many, many people that were involved in helping with this and helping with the program. There were actually over 40, 55 people that actually I interviewed, or my affiliates I interviewed. And I'll say more about that when we go through methodology. But before I actually share my summary, I would like to just say or comment briefly that today's workforce is unlike any we've ever seen before. It is a workforce that not only needs, but wants to be heard and to make a difference in the world. And they need to be validated and respected more than any other workforce. It's just not good enough to have a job. They want to be recognized for their hard work and their effort, and they want to be respected, and they want input into decisions. They don't have to make the decisions, but they would like to give their voice, and they would like to know the outcome of decisions and perhaps the rationale for that. And they're not as concerned about hierarchy as I was when I was at the workforce. There is one thing, however, that hasn't changed about this workforce, and it is that they really don't want to hear, if you don't like it, you can leave. That's one thing, as soon as that's said, it makes them think that they don't matter. And that's when you begin to find that employee disengage, they are reluctant to give their whole selves to their job, and they find that it's just not as fun to work there. And also, it can be a deceit for humanization. So having said that, as I said, I'll go through these things on the outline very quickly. And if we can go to the next slide, I was asked at a third-party independent objective consultant, and I think some of these was advocated by others to actually bring someone like myself in, to actually objectively and thoughtfully assess the AMSA work climate, what's the outcomes of best of my ability understanding the root causes and drivers for what would then proceed as problems that were undermining the trust and credibility of the school administration with faculty, staff, and parents. So that was the mission. And there were two objectives, two key objectives, and sub-objectives. The first goal really was to understand AMSA employee engagement and satisfaction levels, those that were really influencing academic outcomes and individual or better or worse. And under that were sub-objectives to really report back, having identified the strengths of the workplace, climate, gaps, barriers, opportunities for development and improvement, to be able to analyze the current work climate versus what was really desired by employees. And to have a benchmark to measure future engagement and employee satisfaction level again, so then in a year, perhaps 18 months after work is done, you will be able to see if you're making progress with what you put in place. And also, to the extent we could just identify the root causes for employee engagement or lack thereof. And then the second key goal was anticipation of knowing that there would likely be at least a new administration at the top, to be able to understand those opportunities and to prepare the new administration for anticipated culture transformation work. And under that was really to determine what interventions, if needed, were required, along with organizational support, and to come back and make recommendations to the DOT that they could discuss and prioritize. Let me just share a little bit about my methodology. And that was, employees were asked to volunteer. This happened over the summer. We started in the middle of July or sometime soon after the first week in July. And we got about 40 volunteers. We wanted to make sure that there was a good enough cross-section of employees by demographics, by department, function, gender, age, and years of service. So I and my two colleagues did interview some 40 volunteers and some 55, actually over 55, current employees and former employees. And we spent over 75 hours on interviews by phone. To the extent that the volunteers did not represent all aspects of the demographic, I was given a list of employees, not told who to choose, but to select, to go out and solicit more volunteers to ensure that we had a good cross-section of employees from all the various They were asked 31 questions. I actually sent them a questionnaire in advance, but they weren't required to fill it out in advance. That was just a basis for our conversation. And they were asked to respond to statements that were stated in a positive, so it might say morale at AMSA is high. And they could either strongly agree, agree, neither agree nor disagree, disagree, or strongly disagree. So there were five points that they could actually come with, but the middle was not necessarily neutral. It was assumed that four was that you agreed unless they stated otherwise. And if they didn't agree, neither agree nor disagree, it really meant that either they were neutral, or they didn't have enough information to really answer, or they might have a mixed opinion. They might have agreed that their morale was high, but they didn't think that the rest of the school was high. So that's how it kind of went. We also asked them three open-ended questions. So in addition to the 31 questions, they were, they just gave their response, but then if it were strongly agree or strongly disagree, or even in the middle, we encouraged them to say more. Give examples. Could they say the basis for those responses? And then we were able to take notes. And then in the three final questions, they were open-ended and they were, what are the two or three things that AMSA is doing well that should continue? Those things that you just don't want to miss, though, because they're working. And that gave us an idea of what were the priorities and what really was going well. The second question was, if you were in charge of AMSA, what are the two or three things that you would do to improve the work environment? If you had that magic wand, what would you do immediately that would make the most difference? And that gave us an idea, not only the recommendations, what the priorities were. And then the last question we asked was, what else should I know? Is there anything that I haven't asked that I should be asking? And out of that, we took notes and ultimately stopped interviewing at some point and began aggregating and analyzing the results and the report back that I will share with you in summary tonight. I just want to share that I did have a few guiding principles, and you can see guiding principles that helped me in all my work, but were particularly important in approaching the interviews when I talked with employees and former employees. And so most important in there was actually one of the last ones, which is making sure that I and my affiliates provided a safe environment for them to speak out and that we could have meaningful dialogue. And also, that the anonymity of the respondents was guaranteed. So that when I'm reporting out, I'm reporting back common themes that people said, and wanting to make sure that we respected the dignity of all of the stakeholders and what they said, and also approaching the questions with non-judgment, but in a spirit of curiosity, not judging whether their answers were good or bad, but what were the facts and what was their perspective. So having said that, I want to share with you some of the things that came out. These are from the 31 questions that were asked. And what you see on the screen are the top graders, the 11 top graders. So for example, number one, 94% of employees and former employees, to the extent that they answered that question, responded that they were challenged in their role. I enjoy being part of the organization. 86% agreed or strongly agreed. The tools and technologies we use help me to get my job done. 85% agreed or strongly agreed. That it was a mission-driven organization and that the mission, goals, and objectives of AMSA are clear. 84% agreed or strongly agreed. And Tom, could you go to the next slide just briefly, please?
So, in the larger report, by question, you'll be able to see the pie charts and each of these questions graphically displayed. So I just put the first four of those questions on the screen. So you can see, the green represents the consistency of agreement or strongly agreed. So in the first question, I feel challenged in my role. 94% agreed. 4% strongly disagreed or disagreed. And 2% said they neither agreed nor did they disagree. And then they gave me examples of those things. I enjoy being part of the organization. 86% agreed or strongly agreed. There were 10% that were in the middle that said, you know, I don't, I'm not sure, there are things that I like, but there are things I don't like. And then we were able to ask more questions about that. And 4% of the 55 respondents said I strongly disagree, or I disagree. Tools and technologies came across very high. 85% of respondents said that they had the tools and technology to help them to get the job done. Common responses were things like, I often get my.
Common responses were things like, I often get my own tools and technology. I often use my own. However, when I do need it, AMSA has never refused me. They felt very strongly that it was there for the asking. And as you can see, a very small percentage said that they disagreed or strongly disagreed. On the mission, goals, and objectives, I think that's worth just talking about for a moment. 84% said that they believe that the mission of AMSA was very clear. However, goals and objectives were less clear. And for those that disagreed or were in the middle, they said that things like, they felt that the mission of AMSA is changing and that they aren't sure where it's going. But as more students are added to the rosters and there's a waiting list, they're not sure that the original mission is what it is. And so they wanted more discussion on it. They'd like to see a strategy and better goals and objectives articulated for where the school was going. Tom, can you go back to the prior list? So that gives you just a sampling of the graphs that you may see in the larger report. On other strengths that were noted, it were things like 84% said I have the resources to do my job well. My department operates effectively, 83%. And I think that's worth noting that most people felt that their department operated effectively. They just weren't sure that other departments were operating effectively. And you'll notice that even at 83%, while people agreed or strongly agreed, there were a good number of people that said, you know, I just don't agree with that or I strongly disagree. And people were very passionate in both ways. Employees have the right skills and experience for the most part. People said AMSA employees and in particular teachers have the right skills. They acknowledge that there are always exceptions to that. Where there were anecdotes or information, it was typically that it's getting better, that oftentimes in the past, some employees cited that employees didn't always have the right experience or enough experience to do the job and they were learning on the job. Another strength, 78% said management supports my development and skill improvement. That was very strong. Of course, some said that they didn't. My benefits are competitive. Mr. Brucato was more often cited for working hard to ensure that benefits were competitive. Many employees said, I don't use the benefits. So I'm not sure that they are, but I use my spouse's benefits. But still, it came across very strong. Clear reporting structures have been established. 70% agreed or strongly agreed. And usually it was the reporting structure where they knew what to do to get their job done or if it had something to do with teaching. The reporting structure was less clear when it came to getting problems solved or going to, who to go to if they had an issue or an employee relations problem. They knew mostly that they go to their department head for just everyday business, but it was the problems that they were unclear about. Employees have good balance between their work and in their personal life. 65% said yes. But I do think it's noted that most people did say, if you're going to be a teacher, you're going to work in the school system, you're going to put a lot of hours in, and there's no such thing as work-life balance. Many people chuckled. They say, it's my own choosing. Some people did say, no, I don't. And I really think that we're asking too much of our employees. There were some other things that might not have come up in the individual ratings, but these came up when I asked the open-ended questions and they also came out of the questions and probes that I asked about the questions. So these were some things that really you can be very, very proud about. One is that we care deeply about our students. Another is just that strong, unrelenting desire to protect and inspire the students that comes out in the results and outcomes of AMSA's. That the dedication to enhance student culture and to their safety, including things like prevention of student bullying. The fact that teachers are talented and passionate and committed and dedicated. Exceptional, there were no barriers, no lack of pride about the exceptional academic success against external benchmarks and the student accomplishments. And often, or not, more often than not, they credited a wide group of people, everyone from administration to teachers and definitely parents into the community. That challenging and stimulating academic curriculum that you have that's unique, along with passionate, dedicated, committed students and parents. And one thing that I was very pleased to hear about was that it's okay to be smart at AMSA. And that was a common theme. I had respondents who were also parents that said, you know, at other schools, my children were considered outcasts because they were smart or they just weren't cool. But when I came to AMSA, it was like a well-fitting glove. It just mattered. It just fit. That teacher autonomy and inventiveness was mentioned quite often, as well as information and material sharing within departments by peers, not so much between departments, but within departments. I hate to consider them weaknesses, they're more opportunities for improvement. But there were several things noted and how I selected these were on the basis of anything that was less than the majority. So if less than the majority or less than 50% did not agree or strongly agree, then it became an opportunity for improvement. And so let me go to the next slide and we'll come back. So here were the four highest. Unfortunately, 88% of employees, well, let me say it differently. Only 8% of respondents said that morale is high at AMSA. 4% said they didn't agree or they thought maybe my morale is high, but I don't think anybody else's morale is high. And then 88% said morale is low. They disagreed or strongly disagreed. And that one was one that I probed more on when I talked with respondents because morale is a symptom. And I wanted to know, if this is a symptom, what's going on that's contributing it? So that came out and a lot of other things that came out, you'll see in some of the weaknesses and cultural opportunities for improvement. Things like not safe to speak out perhaps, or insecurity over contracts, could be pay, other things. And this was a source of great passion and caring employees wanting to share their stories. Only 21% of employees said they felt it was safe to speak out at AMSA. And again, what I heard most often was, you know, I feel like I really can speak out. It's probably safe. I can go to anybody, but I'm not so sure my fellow colleagues feel that way. Or they would say, I think I feel safe to speak out, but I'm not sure because people are always leaving and we don't, I'm not sure when the next, why that person is leaving and there's always so many rumors and innuendos about why they're leaving and we're getting mixed stories that it kind of undermines my safety. Management creates an environment of trust. 21% agreed. There were a large majority, 18% that said, I trust my department head, but I'm not sure I trust other people. I'm not sure I trust individuals perhaps. And 61% were very clear that they disagreed or strongly disagreed with that. And then the fourth was termination processes are fair and effective. And that also included disciplinary processes or processes that could lead up to terminations like putting people on a performance improvement plan. Come back to that, Tom. Let me go back to that chart again. 22% agreed with that. 48%, slightly less than half, either disagreed or strongly disagreed. And 30% said, you know what, I think they're fair. I think I'm okay, but they speculated. I'm not sure because something's going on with terminations that we don't get and we're, you know, we think people are unhappy by that. So we're just not sure that it's fair. I have no evidence, but it was that perception. Now go back if that's okay. Thank you, Tom. So those were the top or the least best. And I would say your greatest opportunities for improvement. There were other things like communication is timely and effective. And in that case, it was mostly wanting communications, not at the last minute, or multiple channels for communication, maybe just getting a piece of important communication from someone who doesn't normally send out that kind of communication. So it would get lost or scrambling at the last minute to get what they needed or finding out that something was happening at the last minute. The board is effective in governing its role. 31% agreed or strongly agreed with that. And there's a caveat on that. And I didn't ask that, or we didn't start asking that question until we were mostly halfway through the interviews. So I have only 17 respondents on that. But it was actually a suggestion from when I asked that question, is there anything else I should know or anything else I should be asking that became the basis of asking that question? And also a board member came to me and said, you know what, I think we just need to find out what is the perception of how we're doing? So I began asking that question. If people didn't agree with that and there was a lot of mid-level agreement, it was mostly because they said, I don't understand the board members. I don't know the board members. I don't know what they do. Or sometimes it feels like, or I hear they might be overstepping their bounds, but I don't know for sure. So I did also hear quite commonly that they felt that was getting better and that for some reason, communication had been improving over the last several months and that the board was credited for that. Management treats all employees fairly with respect and dignity. Only 37% said they agreed or strongly agreed with that. So going back to my opening remarks, that's definitely an opportunity for improvement. All staff operates as effectively as a unit, 37%. And this often, comments I heard about that were things like, gee, if we were operating effectively, we wouldn't be having this conversation. Or if staff were operating effectively as a unit, we might not have a union. But departments, they did agree for the most part. Again, were operating pretty effectively, individual departments. Grade level meetings are productive. For the most part, people agreed or wanted to agree, but they felt there was something more there with grade level meetings that perhaps the same students or the same problems kept coming up and that they wanted to maybe build on those things and make them more solution-based. So solve the problem so that they could go on to best practices and benchmarks, not talking about the same old problems. Policies are administered fairly and effectively. That was only 38% agreement. And oftentimes I heard things like, policies come into being and they feel like knee-jerk reactions. Or some policies, they may be affected or may be administered effectively, but it depends upon who you know. Or the closer up to the top you are, perhaps the more apt to feel like you agreed with that. So there's something there for improvement. Everyone takes responsibility for their actions. Again, people wanted to agree, but they felt that there was a lot of finger pointing, a lot of blame placing, a lot of negativity in the environment with problems not necessarily getting solved, but getting pushed back. My pay is competitive and fair. Only 46% agreed with that. That might not be unusual, but I think the comments or the anecdotes that I got about that was, it's not about the pay because I don't, I'm not a teacher for the pay. It's about the equity. It's about the fairness. It really was lack of structure. It was lack of knowing how increases were given. And it felt too arbitrary and capricious. And I have to say, no one liked the fact that they had to ask for an increase. Some people went so far as to say, that just feels wrong. It feels dirty. I don't want to have to ask. It feels like that the playing ground is not fair for all people and that we shouldn't have to do that. Management gives helpful feedback to, on how to be more effective. 47% agreed. But they agreed because they said their supervisor or department head took time to give them specific examples, was meaningful and deliberate about observation, observing them, had dialogue with them by it. Those that disagreed said, I got very few observations. It was inconsistent. I was just told you need to improve, so just improve. But they weren't given good examples. So they want specifics on that. Roles and responsibilities within the school are understood. People more often said, my role as a teacher is understood or, but you know, I don't, I'm not sure I understand. The roles that were less clear were the roles of the principal, the assistant principal, sometimes guidance counselor, office staff, and administration. And sometimes board. Okay. On other weaknesses that came across that you don't see necessarily reflected in the numbers, but they were clearly themes. So multiple people, if not the majority, said a flavor of these things. That there was a fear-based work environment, that certain people were known to routinely yelling, intimidating, or bullying. Perceptions of, there was no necessarily evidence of that, but perceptions of that. So perceptions become people's realities if not addressed promptly and they linger and create more problems. Perceptions of favoritism, some nepotism, perceptions of unfairness and arbitrariness in policies and decisions, just negativity and unsafe culture, finger pointing and blame. And I will say that people, I heard often, that it wasn't always this way, that something happened over the last three years that culminated in having just a bad environment last year in particular, maybe starting in 2013. And a lot had to do with things like, you know, terminations, just not knowing when the next person was going to leave and not knowing why, that maybe they were okay and probably were, but it just caused speculation and rumor. And a lot of, just so much change, too much change at one time. And it's hard to adjust to it. Or change given without opportunity to really digest it and talk about it before it was implemented. The at-will contracts, lack of security, and last-minute contract renewals were common. The fact that those just didn't provide a secure and safe environment for people so that they were always not sure if they were going to be there the next day, causing them to, causing it to, the morale to drop. The fractured workforce, and this was many different dichotomies, from union to non-union supporters to how the union got in and how it should have gotten in, from administration versus all others, the really satisfied employees to the really dissatisfied employees. And then you had math and science and all others. It's a math and science school. Are we second-class because we are, not math and science? We don't know because we're not always sure we're appreciated for what we do. Just the lack of voice in major decisions. Different cultures came up often. The fact that the school is separated and they realize that there may not be anything you can do about it, but it created isolation in some cases, that some teachers had the ability to go and actually have a lounge perhaps where they could talk and meet and share best practices and laugh. Others didn't have that. And so therefore, everybody got so busy because there was so much change last year that it was difficult to get together. So some of the things that you talked about tonight, Mary Ann, like the book clubs and opportunities to get together, I think, are important. That turnover and changes, I often heard, I didn't know, I knew somebody left when the lock changed or when the password, security code changed. Otherwise, I didn't know and I didn't know why and because there was no information. And I didn't need to know a lot of information, but because there was an absence, there were rumors. And then the rumors caused more rumors and there was differences in opinions and it just began to create chatter and unnecessary conversations. Perception of the old boys' network and the thing that I said at the beginning was something that almost the majority said they heard routinely. Do what I say or else. If you don't like it, you can leave. Get on board. You're either with me or you're against me. And unfortunately, those were some of the problems. And unfortunately, those were some of the problems.
I don't understand that too much change has been made. Was there any comment on that?
I do, in the larger, I, well, I'm not sure in the larger report. I have to go back with the things like, if you think about the three years that perhaps this was coming about, just the change from the culture in how the Admiral expected, or the expectations, and the loose, it felt like sort of looseness of the environment, to the changes when Mr. Brucato came on board and Mr. Sweeney. The expectations changed dramatically, and they kept changing. But it wasn't only expectations, it was the changes in, you know, initiatives, just multiple initiatives, from student safety, which was well worthwhile, but then you had the new teacher evaluations, not enough time to talk about it before they're implemented, not understanding it, pay for performance. Just all of those things kept adding up to where people said, woo, we haven't had a chance to deal with one, and how we're doing more, and then they felt rather arbitrary and knee-jerk. So let me just end this up. I will say that I'm going to share five of some thirty-five recommendations that I have in the larger report. And I'm sure if I were sitting there and I were a Board member, I would say, wow, Diana, just give me three or four recommendations. I can't take twenty-five or thirty-five. But unfortunately, when we, when I talk with employees, it wasn't just one or two or three things that resulted in this. It was many. And when you're dealing with culture, culture has a tendency to get a hold. You don't know when it's, when the culture is strong in a negative way or a positive way. It just happens. And you just don't, it's not going to happen by one or two things. I think it's a great start when you have great leaders that you've hired, that can set an example and help model the way. And actually, that's one of my, my second recommendations, is to select a new ED and a principal who have strong leadership competencies and values to be able to model the way for the change. They need to be able to walk the talk. And so, they not only need school experience, but they need to have competencies that sometimes not all academicians have, like vision, the ability to inspire me if I'm, if I'm working there, to inspire students. They need to be positive, not negative. You want skilled leaders who are able to encourage collaboration and model inclusion. That they're high in emotional intelligence and self-management, they know how to deal with conflict management. They just don't say, write it down in a report, and we'll think about dealing with it. They need to get to the bottom of it before it gets to the point where you have to write it down, and people start filing claims. There has to be enough knowledge of how to get consensus. That doesn't mean you can't be a leader, and you can't make decisions, and that you have to go with majority. But you have to understand when it's important to get consensus, because it's important enough that you need buy-in. They need courage to act, the ability to communicate. And in this case, I really think that you need change, good change management skills and a good model in place that you can have for change management. My first and foremost recommendation is that you continue to foster on the high employee commitment, the positive feelings, and the caring, the number of caring employees and parents and students that you already have. I feel strongly that if you can build upon what's going right in the organization, you'll find more in the organization going right. If you look for deficits, if you look for problems, and you only are looking at the negative things, you're going to find more of that happening. So train people in appreciative inquiry and model the way for that. And look at all of those strengths, because you have many, many to be proud of. I also recommend that you hire a seasoned HR professional, reporting to the executive director with HR generalist expertise. And please do not think that this is casting any judgment in anybody who currently does anything in the HR function now. It is not. I just feel as though you need a strong enough leader, either part-time or full-time, that can navigate that fine balance between staff and, and management, between parents and teachers, to be able to have the courage to act without being the HR police, to be able to be a partner to not only employees, but also management, help them to develop and grow and to change. And in your case, you're also going to have to have someone that's very good in employee relations and labor relations. I would designate, and I think some of these things will come into place with HR, and I think your, your ED, your executive director and your principal, is to designate and train individuals, not just one individual, but, but more than one individuals, who employees can go to for perceived acts of harassment, perceived bullying, perceived unfair treatment, to ensure that employees always feel safe to speak out and can do so without fear of retribution or retaliation. And lastly, and this may seem like not as important, but it becomes very important when you have department heads that are not only teaching, but managing, and they're not sure which is the most important aspect of their jobs. But do develop and implement just a good leadership development program, just back to basics, so they understand what Leadership 101 is, and, and the basics of things like conflict management, and legal things, and employee relations, and how to navigate conflict, and how to do great performance reviews and other things. Those things will happen over time. So that's a sampling of my thirty-five recommendations. And again, I want to thank Janet Britcher and Chuck Pratt, who spoke to many of the respondents. I definitely, and from the deepest part of my heart, want to thank you for the privilege to, to work with you and to present this to you tonight.
Yeah. I was just going to mention.
Oh, okay.
Oh, I think we're off the mark in talking. We're going to do a whole meeting session.
Yeah, I will add kind of some of our next steps in other sections, but I think, uh...
Or I can act and answer some questions.
Yeah. So, okay. I'm happy to do that. And then, if you don't mind staying there, as I just go through those couple of things, and then if there are follow-up questions, hope that they can answer. And once again, thank you so much, Diana, for all your, I know you and your colleagues spent a lot of time on this. And I think it's going to be a great foundation for us to continue to build up and so, as we continue looking in the future. Tom, if you don't mind bringing up the other presentation, I'd appreciate it. So, so just to take a step back, so we've essentially, or done most of the assessment that was necessary as part of our task force and Diana's efforts. However, I think you could kind of put next, yeah. We feel that we will be complete with the assessment once we have all recommendations. When I say all recommendations, so Diana and her team have provided a set of recommendations, large set of recommendations. We also want the opportunity for employees, as well as parents, to have a deep dive on the information that's going to be available on the website sometime tomorrow, under the trustees area. They can look at those reports, and we will then send out when we're going to have a scheduled deep dive session, if you can bring detailed questions that you may have to those sessions. Or if you have a look at the recommendations, and you feel there's a gap in the recommendations, and you feel we should be doing something else, please bring those. Those sessions will be professionally facilitated, a facilitator who's not from the administration or from the Board, but a third party will, will facilitate it to make sure we stay on track during those meetings, to either just deal with questions or recommendations. And so that's, that's our plan. Again, we'll send out more information on that. And after the deep dive session, we'll collect all those recommendations. And then from our perspective, kind of the task force that's doing the assessment could dissolve. And we need to put in place a task force to do implementation. And needs to focus on that. And we see that as a, potentially a different set of folks, maybe some of them are the same, where there's Board representation, but there's also administration representation. And the idea there would be, we take a look at the issues, the recommendations, and then we go through the steps, steps of dividing up which need to be dealt by the Board, which need to be dealt by the administration. Those teams then, those parties can then get the ball rolling on, in terms of handling those situations, what needs to be addressed. But also, that task force needs to put in place something systemic or systematic to, to deal with, how do we make sure these are followed through on? How do we make sure there's proper communication between Board, administration, parents, teachers, that we're actually making progress on these, and so forth? So we, we'd like to propose, as, as a task force, to in fact, put another task force into play, so to speak, once our assessment function has completed. So those are the few things that are coming up. Having said that, I would just open up, or ask if folks have questions for Diana now, or for task force, or if Chris, or Scott have anything else to add.
So, I just want to thank Diana, and thank the fifty-five people who, you know, volunteered their time. You know, we're brave enough to speak out even in, you know, a protected environment. I think the big, we, so obviously, we learned a lot of things, or we are learning a lot of things. For myself, it was the question, and Rick said at the beginning, was, so how deep is this, and how far does it go? That was really very, very unclear to us, all the way into the spring, until it just got too loud to say, oh, there's got to be a lot here. So I mean, we've got that, you saw the graphs, and I think those pie charts pretty much say it all. I think that in going forward, what we've got to do is figure out, as a Board, is so how do we learn these kinds of things in a timely way? How do we have multiple avenues of getting information, so that it's not all coming from one Board, one source? And how can we respond in a timely manner? And I think we've got to figure out kind of how we're going to lead in that. And then, a lot of the stuff, when you dig in, you'll see, a lot of the stuff is really for the management of a school to be doing at their level, but it's how do we, you know, how do we make sure that we're directing Dr. D'Amello appropriately, and learning both from her and from others what's really going on, and then responding in a governance way, you know, and without, without getting into the weeds of how to do this and that. Really keeping everybody's feet to the fire in terms of pursuing the goals that we, that we as a Board agree that we need to pursue, and us being responsible for the outcomes. That's how I spend my summer.
I did have a couple of questions.
Speak up, Melissa.
The fifty-five that interviewed, they were all faculty members? Or were they staff members as well?
We had a good cross-section by department role function.
And your demographics are in the big report?
They were.
And some of the commentary, I think, that you were giving throughout the meeting is in the big report.
I did. So when I, there were six categories of, of questions, thirty, thirty, thirty-one questions were divided up into six categories. And under those categories and questions, I provided samples of, not exact verbatim, but samples from our notes that represented fees.
Yeah. In, in, in the big report, which we're putting on the website, it adds like every question, and has all the breakdowns, it's a lot of information. We would have been here until like two o'clock in the morning.
Thank you, Diana.
But that is going on the website. Melissa, you're going to be impressed.
Sounds like a lot of reading.
So I will say that it does take a bit of courage to put that report out on the website for the public to read it. Just, and I think it's good, right? That's what we're here for, is some transparency. But there's some damning comments in there, and they're anonymized, but you, you can read through those comments, and there's some, yes, there's pretty ugly feelings that go on there, which we need to know about. But I encourage everybody to read it. It's going to be out there in the next few days, and it's sort of hard reading, because there's some challenges we have.
There are. And you know, one of the things I found is that it's so easy when you begin talking with that, that number of employees, to think that there's got to be a right and a wrong, or that someone is good or someone is bad. And as I began talking with people, I would talk with one about a particular incident, and I would find that what they said was, sounded very plausible, it sounded very truthful, it sounded very right, maybe even very wrong. And then I would talk with three or four other people, and the same scenario would come up, and it would be totally opposite of what the other person said. And that scenario sounded very truthful, and very honest, and very real, too. And what it reminded me of is that a lot, and I think this goes down in any organization, is that there's never one truth, there are many truths. And that if I, if I feel that I have a truth, and I, and you have another truth, it doesn't mean that I'm right and you're wrong. It means that we both can be right, but that we have to work hard at finding common ground. And it's that common ground that's going to prevent polarization that's so challenging.
I was trying to capture the five, and those are what you consider the five top recommendations?
Not necessarily. I think it starts with, you know, getting your leadership in place, but I think it also starts with looking at your culture, and just saying, you know, being very explicit about, this is what we want in our culture, and this is what we don't want. Otherwise, you're going to have an accidental change. You won't know what's changing. So get together, figure out, these are the things that are important to us. And then just keep measuring yourself, and keep putting tactics and programs in place, and actions in place that support what you want, not what you do.
Well, so there's seven, six more pages of those, or whatever. When I looked at those, what I didn't see, you know, focus on the positives, hire good leaders, hire an HR professional, train people to kind of help suss out the problems, harassment and bullying, and create some mechanism, and then leadership training. Do you have a recommendation for the Board, specifically to try to figure out, to help us figure out how we can hear about these better, through better communication channels? Because our challenge, and this is not defensive in nature, but this sort of snuck up on us, right?
Can I kind of address this? This actually came up in our task force.
Sounds like Chris was talking about, yeah, go ahead.
This actually came up in our, in our task force, and it was something we actually talked about. And the development of the school committee, school council, that we've actually talked about, could help with that.
To surface issues.
I don't think that's enough.
Well, if I can just address it, again, going back to what...
But Diane, you're not off the hook. We'll discuss this, and I'm going to still ask you your questions. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to, to clarify what a school council is, is about. And so I think that some general thoughts about improvement of a school could be discussed in a school council, but from the discussions I've had since I arrived, and from some of the things that have been stated in the report, and then what you're asking about, you know, being aware of some things, I think some of that, the key part, because in some instances, it had to do with personnel situations, and you, you could not discuss that in a school, school council forum. Wouldn't be the right place for it. But having some clarification about HR practices, and, and not just having them, but making sure that the, the people in the district know what they are, and know how to use them, and don't feel that there's a repercussion for taking that path. So really, firming up some of those aspects of our reporting, I think, will, will help with some of that. And making sure that if it's your supervisor, that you feel you have a place to, to go to be able to report if it's your supervisor, because without feeling in particular that there's a problem. So those things are not things that you could bring up in a school council forum. But we definitely need to have it firmed up in our HR department, so that we do have a mechanism for that. Or ways to go directly to the Board, and we've talked, I think, some, some conversations maybe have been had about whistleblower types of things, right, to be in place, so that, so that people feel they can do it without, without having to worry.
Yeah, that's my question for Diana as well, that I wrote, how, how do we make sure that structurally, we make some changes, so that we're not in this position ever again, where we're seeing this shocking stuff on the screen? And I think that there needs to be a structural change, not just in a new leadership, but in the connections that the leadership has with the Board, and the Board with the faculty, and that, that, I mean, I don't know if that involves like a constitution change, or a charter change, or, like, I feel like there's some genuine, it, the problem happened because there were not the tools in place to, to deal with it as it was coming up. And that if we don't use this opportunity to address that, then we really wasted a lot of heartache.
I couldn't agree more. It's about, I mean, I think I wrote down, how are we going to continue to have a flow of information, ensure that spot maintains... And I think that there needs to be a structural change, not just in a new leadership, but in the connections that the leadership has with the board, and the board with the faculty, and that, that, I mean, I don't know if that involves like a constitution change or a charter change, or like, I feel like there's some genuine, it, the problem happened because there were not the tools in place to, to deal with it as it was coming up, and that if we don't use this opportunity to address that, then we really wasted a lot of heartache.
I couldn't agree more. It's about, I mean, I think I wrote down, how are we going to continue to have a flow of information, ensure that spot maintains visibility, or is getting that, you know, what are our methods of communication to get this input from the faculty? Because I think, you know, all of these is improving the internal structure of the school, but it's not really creating that it's-
No, that's exactly my question.
Diane, do you have a recommendation for a structural change that, that might have, that could prevent something like this in the future?
Well, you know, there are a few things. One is, in the fourth recommendation down, was is designating and training individuals that are go-to people. That becomes very, very important. Typically, that's your HR person that you can go to, that they, they do walk that very fine line, and they've got the credibility, and you can, can speak to them, and you know that it's going to be safe, and that they will help to work with the executive director, or it could be a board member, to make sure that the problem gets solved quickly, appropriately, and with respect, respectfully. There's also, you'd have a tool in place that actually you look back on. I think that you had good intentions with your, with your surveys, your faculty surveys, and also with your parent surveys. If you go back in those, you'll find, you'll find many of the things that I'm reporting, reported in those surveys, but I think because you looked at them internally, I think it's an opportunity, I think those should probably be conducted outside by a third party, or that the results should go to a third party, and that it has been reported back. Because I think you got too busy and you didn't have the opportunity to analyze them, because if you had analyzed them, you would have seen that there were, there were triggers or there were warning signs that there were some problems that needed to be looked at and checked.
Like satisfaction with certain leaders? Is that where you would see that in those surveys?
You would see that in those surveys, that it's not safe to speak out. You didn't see that in those surveys.
What did you think of the survey structure? Were they, are they good enough to help us catch these in the future? Because we clearly missed them.
I think many of the questions were, there were some I probably wouldn't include because they were somewhat leading. I think that the fact that they, that they were done by monkey survey, and they went back internally, would give smart technology-wise employees some pause to say, wow, this is going back to IMSA, is it really safe for me to respond?
Yeah.
So, I think by doing it outside third party, I think, I think that would be one. And then, and then building it in to act on it, like getting a report out and saying, what is that telling us, and are we making progress? So, you're holding them accountable, so as a board, I think you need to hold them accountable for resolve. You don't have to tell them what to do, but, you know, let's take a look at those. And then I think there were some other opportunities that might have come. There wasn't a good, I couldn't see that there was a good process for investigating complaints, and as a result, it got, you showed they're not acting on, and employees felt they were dismissed or not heard.
Sue, with the, with the surveys, one of the things that I spoke to the five or 10 parents between 6:00 and 6:30 is that I do think that's something that, as a board-
Melissa, could you speak up, please?
The surveys, one of the things I spoke to the parents about between 6:00 and 6:30 is I do think that, that's something that we should talk about, and consider a third-party service, that not only will execute the survey, we, we identify what we want to learn from it, they might be able to help us with some of the wording of the survey, and prepare a nice report similar to this, that just helps bubble up some of the things that we need to look at. But I think that one of the things we probably need to do a better job at is, after we get those results, if there's issues we need to address, we might need to find other avenues of trying to get more communication. Similar to, you know, you have your standard quantitative, but maybe, maybe there might be a need for qualitative after that, if there's some issues that rise to the top. That, I mean, that might be one way to try it. I think it's going to be trial.
It's an existing tool, but not quite effective.
Yeah. Yeah, I, just to your point of qualitative, I think, especially to understand if there's real issues, sometimes you have to have that qualitative aspect, because you just can't see it in numbers or in people filling in dots. And people sometimes don't think, you know, that it's going to be paid attention to. You know, people get survey fatigue, they get surveyed everywhere they're going for everything they do, and having that qualitative aspect to it, of course, to a limited extent, you know, maybe we don't go as broad as we did this time, but having some extent, something like that is going to be helpful.
And I, one last thing, though, survey tools can be really, really wonderful. What you did, having the courage to bring someone like myself, is really a good thing. However, if you do surveys and you don't act on them, then employees think you stopped listening, and you might as well not do them, because they can cause more harm than good.
I, I think, as a, as a faculty representative, that that is definitely a feeling among the faculty, that was definitely happening, that we were doing these surveys, we were trying to get the messages that came out here to the board, we were trying to get those messages heard, and we really did feel like nobody was listening to us, or that if we, if we were listened to, that somebody would say, I know you're upset, you're, you're, you're a minority, you're the only one that feels this way, everybody else is happy, if you, you know, and, and you know what, if you don't like it, leave, you know, as she said. So, I, I think that there's some responsibility as a board, which, it's easy for me to say that I wasn't there at the time, but that, that this message was, was out there, and trying to find the right ears.
Now, one question I have is that, and I don't know if you can answer this, but I'm certain there wasn't enough that you could put in your report, like your feeling of what some of the root causes were to some of these concerns? Because, you know, I'm hearing you say things like that, that staff effectiveness of the unit is a problem because we wouldn't be in this situation if it wasn't, but that's not really why. And was there sort of that qualitative piece of that?
Yeah, there, um, I have, I have, I think, what some of the root causes were, because, you know, asking those questions, and what you think are some of the causes, so, I think that they're broken down into environmental kinds of things, like, like too much change at one time. You have the ability to only handle so much change, and then finally get that up, you don't, you know, and your, your head starts spinning. So, there's so much of that. I think that-
Does that actually change, or is that communication?
And is it directed at a specific person or not? See, one of the things I have this problem with everything, is that obviously, a lot has changed in terms of executive director, we have a new one in place, principal work in the midst of a new search, so the whole top looks different. So, how do we weigh out the comments and that part of the survey with where we are now from before? I mean, was it directed towards specific people? How do we measure that?
Well, you're going to be able to measure it, I think, by, yeah, seeing if you do something similar, do similar questions, you'll be able to tell, are we making progress? It is, when you're thinking about the environmental kinds of things, you've got to be very careful about what you're implementing, so, I'm not sure I can answer that question, Alison, is your question going, how do you know if you're making progress, or is it-
How do we know what piece was directed at former administration personnel that was here, and how is it, maybe that some of the pieces is just directed at the environment as a whole? There's a big difference between the two.
When you have the environmental things, like, like lots of initiatives going on, the faculty, faculty evaluation system, again, not that it was bad, or, people didn't even mind the faculty evaluation system, it's just that they didn't understand it well enough, and didn't, didn't believe that it was done so quickly, that it was as fair as they, you know, that might have could be, could be. So, those kinds of things, do you attribute that to an individual person? It's just, it happens, you know? The decision was made to do them. Is that going to change by bringing in a new executive director? Maybe, maybe not. The person just needs to be cognizant of the kind of changes that if you're going to do major changes that influence and impact employees, make sure you build enough time to do it well. Because people said, it wasn't what you did, it was how they did it.
So, communications is a big aspect of what we're talking about.
I will say that, that the senior leadership, and in particular, former principal, was often cited as having very, very good intentions, and being very smart, but also credited with not doing things in a way to make people feel respected and regarded, and, and perhaps did things wishy-washy, changing the mind of, you can only apologize so much. People will accept apologies, and they want apologies, and they're pretty typically grateful, but then if you keep repeating the same behavior over and over, they think, you don't learn. So, I think that was a big problem, that it wasn't acted on soon enough. I think it's glad to need more support. I just think that it went on too long. I think the whole thing about the yelling, the perceptions of bullying, even that thing about leave, if you don't like it, leave, if you aren't with me, you're against me, that was, it became part of the culture at the way. It wasn't just one individual saying it. I heard people saying, other people were saying, it wasn't just one or two, it was like, it was all over, from different people that they respected. And I didn't think, I heard, I heard, it's painful. So, I don't think it was one or two individuals, and that leadership change is going to do it. I think that the culture now has to be changed, and I think if you even just sit down with your teachers and with your board and say, gee, this is what we want our culture to be, we want to be an example to other schools, that they can not only look up to us through academics, but they can look up to us as leaders, because we are building leaders from our students, because we're growing as leaders ourselves. Sounds like motherfying, apple, apple pie in motherhood, it's a pretty important thing.
If I could just say, I think that there, there is an opportunity, though, for whoever's in the, the leadership roles, though, that we can, you folks can hold the administration accountable, your ED, and then the ED to the principal and so on, but the things that you've listed, there are many things that we can do something, you know, that we have to do something about, and that the new leadership can be made to do. Like, you know, some of the suggestions that have been brought forward about making sure that you create ways that the, the teachers are involved in, in processes. Making sure that we put something in place that if I'm doing something, for example, as an executive director, that there is a way to skip over that person, to get to the folks who need to be, because I think people, it sounds like people felt there wasn't a mechanism for that, or if they did, and it was a single person, it may be thinking it's just that one person and not, maybe more widespread, because it takes a lot of coverage to make that step. But I think we can put those mechanisms in place and hold the, the EDs to it and the, and the principals to that in the future, so that they have a, a way to, to share those, those thoughts.
Can I ask one more question? As sort of a professional who does this kind of stuff, do you think that it would be feasible or recommended or helpful or any kind of positive word that you could come up with for the institution? One of the sources of conflict was terminations, to reach out to people who were terminated and attempt to bring them back, or are we like past that point? Is that not going to be productive? I, maybe I shouldn't even ask that question, but I already did.
I think you retract it.
Um, you know, sometimes it's best to let sleeping dogs lie. I think that it may be best, I, it's hard, it's very hard, you're going to have to make some of those judgments yourself. I, I didn't find any wrongdoing in my, in my assessment, I didn't find any, anything illegal in my assessment, I found bad, bad practices. I found well-intentioned people that maybe, you know, fell short in terms of how they delivered their, the outcome. I think that's a very, very hard thing to, to do, because I don't know. You're never going to make everybody happy, and I think it's very hard, very hard thing to, to say, let's, let's go ahead and do. I'm not saying I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily, I'd reject that out of hand, but I'd say, I'm not sure, I would be cautious about that. Thank you.
If, I could just make a comment, Alison, in terms of, I think, one of the things you were getting to, which was, as this, as these interviews were taking place, we were going, undergoing change. And so, how much of it, in terms of the interview response pointed back, how much is current, how much, et cetera? And I think part of the, the role of the implementation task force, as they prioritize the issues and the recommendations, is going to be to try to look at things a bit from the lens of, what are the highest priority things to do, now especially considering certain changes have already been made and are continuing to be made? I think, though, having said that, Diana, maybe you can speak to this, you know, in some of the comments up there and in the detailed report, it speaks of management. And I think, especially the assessment task force, and as, as folks are reviewing it, are going to have this challenge of, sometimes when they see management, they're going to necessarily think of two specific roles that are no longer, individuals may not longer be here, and, and sometimes it isn't necessarily that. I think you spoke to, you know, we need some management 101 training, maybe. I think in some cases, there may be a need for us to look at the next level down in terms of, is all the training there necessary to address some of the other concerns that are there? And I think that's going to be something that the assessment task force has to be really, I'm sorry, implementation task force has to be really cognizant of. I don't know if you have a comment on that, but-
Not really.
Yeah.
You find leaders throughout the organization, and everyone has had to be a leader, and everyone, this wasn't, this wasn't just one or two people, I think they set a tone, perhaps, and maybe elevated things that could have been acted on sooner, but, you know, I think there were multiple things that contributed to it, and there was, you know, it didn't necessarily, it wasn't just one person or two people, although it is easy to believe that, so, there were a lot of well-intentioned, good people, and things just didn't always go the way they wanted.
Go ahead, Roger.
I have a, sort of, a different, a different question, and we had some recommendations in particular for the principal, but what should we be doing as both a board and as a school to hire great people?
Well, if that isn't embedded in my, in one of the recommendations, it very well should be, because, you know, it starts with hiring. And so, your, your processes about hiring, doesn't have to be perfect hiring, it's never going to be perfect, but I do think that you need to have, be thoughtful in terms of putting a good job description together, a good profile. It's not about the qualifications, in terms of academic qualification alone, as we talked about, their leadership qualifications, skills, competencies that are important, and I think you've got to hire to those, and I think you want to train people, anybody who's involved in the interview process, to be able to do a good interview, because otherwise, you hire in your own image, and you may not hire the best people. And if you're hiring poorly, you're wasting all of your time and money and effort to undo it. So, I think it's frightening.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Diana? Thank you, Diana.
Thank you very much.
So, so Rick, are there dates for those two breakout sessions?
Uh, no, we don't have dates yet. I think there, there's certain logistics we need to work through.
Yeah.
Uh, one is certainly with the employees drill-down session, we want to work with Mary Ann, make sure we coordinate that properly. I think the other is the matter of getting a third party to be able to facilitate those meetings. So, I, we, the, the date is TBD, we obviously want to do it sooner rather than later.
Okay.
But the intent also is to try to post the summary report, as well as Diana's detailed report, up on the site by sometime tomorrow.
Okay.
And, and for folks who want to look at it, it'll be under the trustees section. Thank you.
Just one other comment.
No, go ahead.
Oh. I was just sort of going to wrap up the topic.
Oh, no, I was just going to ask, will, we will regroup as a board with the feedback from those detailed sessions, and the recommendations, and talk about-
Yeah, I, I would anticipate we'll, we'll have a readout, because, or we should probably have some sort of readout, especially in terms of, because we need to transition then from assessment phase to implementation phase.
Thank you.
So, I was just going to remind the board that, I don't want to really remind you of April, May, and June, but I remind you that there was lots of angst within the school that we, we chose to focus on teachers. that we, we chose to focus on teachers and administration. But there's another constituency that was pretty frustrated with what was going on and that was the parents. And we had a lot of that feedback coming from all kinds of different angles. Um, so we're going to get some of that feedback more directly now as in, you know, as a reflection of this survey. But I just wanted to recognize that there was a lot of parents that were somewhat frustrated with what was going on here. So we'd sort of got the first constituency and now we're circling back to get the second input as well. Okay. Um, let's move on. Thank you very much, everybody who stayed in the audience. Uh, we're going to a bunch of committee meetings, which is the most exciting portion of the meeting. And I'm glad you are here. Uh, Tom.
Are we going to, are we going to go back to the annual goals?
We're still having problems.
Okay, pretty good.
Yeah, we can have that next time. So Tom, can you lead a finance committee discussion?
All right, uh, in the interest of Tom, I'll point out a couple of things here. We're going to look at the July to August numbers at this time. Again, July and August are top of the charts for the time that is stated by, so we'll put that out there and suggest that, um, we can dive down in more detail at our next meeting when we are into a seven day period. So the highlights that I will point out, um, on our July, August and August month and July, August year to date, tuition is now coming in on a monthly basis. And we actually received July and August payments. So we have those here and that's coming on a monthly basis.
Is that going to be 12 months a year?
Uh, I think it's going to be 12 months a year. I think, I think it is going to be 12 months a year. That's always the idea behind it. July, August, if we got it in July, August, it'll be 12 months.
Yeah.
And then in the interest of time, we'll come down to the bottom line. Um, year to date, we're showing surplus of $113,000, which is showing year to date surplus uh, against the budget. So we will, we function a surplus of $702,000. We actually have surplus at the point of $116,000. Obviously giving the tuition payment in August when we don't have all of our normal expenses because we've been in July and we don't have all of our normal expenses because we have to bottom line. But we're $113,000 ahead of the budget. So that's what I'll highlight in the interest of time, just one thread. And we can pick it up at our next meeting.
Any questions for Tom? Thank you, Tom. So we will move to governance. Colleen?
Yeah, there's two things that I want to cover in governance. Um, actually, I'm going to get the changes to the student parent handbook provisions first. And I speculated these earlier this week or last week or sometime. Um, I would talk about these at governance and recommend that these just get approved and I'm just going to highlight what they are. There are minor things in the student parent handbook, um, that sort of, that I highlighted last time that were coming. So one is removal of the attendance team with responsibilities assumed by the student affairs coordinator or the assistant principal. That suspensions may also be determined by this assistant principal, not just the principal. That the loss of senior privileges would occur if there were six charters per quarter instead of five to maintain security with other, um, with other aspects of the student. The addition of black pants to the allow PE dress day code. Removal of the golden lock concept, which was a concept that if kids didn't have locks on their lockers, they would be locked out. Uh, addition of the class trip to the list of senior events that would be a consequence of disciplinary action for some reason that was locked in the group's list. And there's a change in the final back page, the acknowledgement opt-out form, um, because what happens in the student handbook is already being duplicated, coming out of the operation. So those are the types of changes. So I would say that we accept the student handbook.
Any discussions or questions before you do that, Colleen?
So I'd make a motion that we, that we.
Is there a second? Melissa? All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes? Thank you.
And then the second item is that we asked the EDs and former EDs to draft goals. And the government committee talked about these at a very high level and agreed that for Mary Ann, there would be four major areas of focus for the upcoming school year. So these, these, these aren't SMART goals yet. Um, we felt that she needs some time to be able to draft those. But the four areas where she should be focusing, one, improve culture. And that includes both school culture and cultural proficiency. Two, increase and enhance professional development. Three, ensure a successful charter renewal and accountability plan development. And four, increase and enhance communication. Uh, we also discussed whether any of the four major areas that were proposed for the former EDs need to, um, to focus on needed to roll into her others and agrees that there were just some minor areas that none of them really rose to the level of, of goal.
What's cultural proficiency?
Oh, I was going to ask too. I was glad you asked.
Policies, practices and programs are developed that enable staff members and students to interact effectively in a culturally diverse environment in which students' backgrounds, identities, strengths and challenges are respected. Staff are provided with relevant resources and opportunities to build cultural proficiency and expand global perspectives. Just as a quick reference point, the, uh, all of the goals in some way tie in with the Department of Education's superintendent evaluation program.
So what is cultural proficient, I mean, we said improved culture and cultural efficiency.
So, so what, I want, no, it's okay. So I want to be able to focus on the culture with respect to some of the types of things we heard tonight.
Right.
But also culture in the sense of, um, understanding the diversity, respect for one another, creating an environment where we honor people's, uh, differences, that we're respectful of, of one another and, uh, and having a, an awareness of other types of cultures that are out there.
Okay.
Because we are a reasonably diverse community, uh, both with the teaching staff as well as with our students.
That's it.
Okay. Is that it for governance?
Yeah.
Any, any questions on the four interim goals?
Well, they, I think the next meeting will be the, will be the real meet is, is when we take these four goals and, and Dr. Demello will turn them into.
SMART goals.
Into SMART goals, I believe that'll be discussed through governance.
All right. Uh, so next up is education committee.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
This says that we need to vote on something.
We voted on the student handbook.
Okay, all right.
Good catch. So ed committee?
Um, so we had a meeting, what, a couple, a week, a couple weeks ago?
September 9.
September 9. So, um, the two things that we want to highlight are, do you want to do this one, Melissa?
We, uh, so what we talked about is, um, over the last two years, we had some of the department chairs come in and give us an overview of the curriculum. So we, we talked about creating a binder that had a curriculum overview of all courses available at the school. So kind of what you see in your course off run, but a lot of times, um, all the courses available are not there. It's really only what's available the next fall. So just one stop shop for all that information because I think we get a lot of questions from parents about curriculum and courses and what's available. And I think really deep questions about curriculum need to be addressed with the department chair because we're only looking at changes. If they have some sort of questions or need clarification, but we want to provide a resource not only for, um, the community, but also for the board members that, um, we have it all documented in a binder. It's actually one of our goals for the end of this year.
Yeah, so just to clarify what Melissa said or go further, the, um, the courses offered and the courses that are actually running right now or the courses that are available might not always be the same. For instance, if there was an elective that was offered, but only two kids signed up for it, then that class doesn't run. But that doesn't mean that next year there wouldn't be a lot of interest in that and that it's not sort of on the menu at some point. So we'd like a binder that not only has the information of sort of everything that's on the menu, but kind of notes, you know, this, this ran last year or it might run next year or something like that and sort of, so that information is, is clear. Um, the other topic that came up was Mary, was Dr. Demello talked about her plan, a technology plan. Um, and that the, the first step in her technology plan was to hire a technology coordinator. Um, and it came up, you know, how is this different from an IT director or what we've had in the past? Um, and she really was, was lovely. She cleared it up for me, so hopefully this will be clear to other people. But that this sort of a three-pronged approach that, that this technology plan would encompass, um, sort of our infrastructure as a school. Do we have the software and the technology? We need to run a school website to take attendance, to do all of those things that we need to run a school. The second part is, do teachers have the technological resources that they need to teach with? Things like SMART boards or iPads or whatever teachers need, like overhead projectors. That's what we used in the old days. Um, probably no one's asking for that anymore. And then the third prong would be, um, student education, the computer science department. Do kids have the right, um, do we have the right equipment for kids to learn computer science on? Um, are, are, do we have enough facilities for that? And, and so that all three of these areas, um, would kind of come under one thing and that there really hasn't been in the past a good coordination of those, of those things. And, um, so that is one of Dr. Demello's sort of plans going forward. Did I say it right?
Yes, we're pretty good on it. I, I'll just add, if I may for a moment, just because I was also asked the question this morning at the, at the parent coffee. And so, uh, one of those was, you know, what would the job description look like? And what will that person do? And, and so we don't know right now because some of that's going to be driven by things like as we start to develop our vision more clearly about what we want for the district in terms of technology, whether we want to explore a one-to-one initiative, a possibility just for folks at home, for clarification, that meaning, uh, you know, a laptop or some kind of electronic device for every student. So it's a one-to-one initiative. So whether we look at, at, at things like that down the road, um, or whether we want the person to help more with instructional technology directly and helping the, the teachers in the classroom to utilize it or whether it's more students. So, um, you know, as we develop our vision more clearly, then we'll develop the, the job description more clearly of what that person will look like and what title will actually be for the person. And then how are we going to weigh that against what we're already using for consultants who are also giving us sort of networking and, and infrastructure and, uh, and leadership advice? And what pieces will we retain with them or, or maybe none or maybe all? So it's all a balance that's yet to be determined. So, um, that's, we just, so folks know it is in the budget, but that's why I haven't posted it yet because I think it would be, uh, too early, you know, because we don't know, have enough clarity about what we want or need.
Thank you. Anything else?
Next ed committee meeting is on October 14.
All right. So let's move to fundraising.
So the fundraising and development committee will meet in October.
Okay.
We're waiting for the dust to settle a little bit. Uh, and I will try and connect with, um, Dr. Demello before then to kind of get our ducks lined up. We're working on a date, um, in late, late October for the committee to reconvene.
All right, thank you, Chris. Parent representatives. Miss Melissa there?
So I did meet with parents before this meeting. Uh, there were, you know, some questions and clarification, a lot of feedback coming from the meeting, um, this morning. I, you know, I sat and I kind of listened to some of that, but I think Dr. Demello did a good job summarizing that at the beginning, some of the things, um, the themes. So I don't really have anything else to update. I think I've tried to infuse it throughout the meeting.
Okay, all right, thank you, Melissa. And Jessica, on faculty update?
Uh, yeah, I don't have a lot. Um, uh, Dr. Demello said about the faculty book club. I would like to say for the record that Blood Meridian is the worst book I think I've ever read, but whatever, I'll take it up with Mr. Smith.
You should start a competing club.
Yeah, we've had a spirited debate already, so.
Okay.
Um, I also want to, um, it was said earlier that the, um, the collective bargaining group is meeting for the first time tomorrow night or tomorrow evening. Um, I have sensed from some teachers a little bit of frustration that that has taken a long time to get that initial meeting to happen. Um, I know it was summer vacation and it's coordinating of schedules and there's a lot of, you know, people to coordinate and moving parts. So I guess, I guess just that teachers are hoping that that is sort of not indicative of the process going forward after this initial meeting happens, that things can, um, the pace can pick up a little bit there. We, there is a sense that people were, that, that the process was stalled and, and that was, um, a little frustrating. Um, I also wanted to mention, as Dr. Demello had some shout-outs, I had one of my own that I teach the chorus class here and, um, I happened to mention in passing that we didn't have a thing to hold all our music folders and they were like a thousand dollars. And Jeremy Morris was like, oh, we have an engineering class. And they built it, they're building me one and they came to me and they interviewed me and they asked for specs and they asked me what I wanted and, um, and it was just like this sort of great moment of like departments working together and sort of using the resources that we have and, um.
So the engineers and the artists are working together.
Yeah, so I haven't seen the music cabinet yet, but, um, but, um, I'm very excited about it. Um, the, the way they were designed, they were like, does it need to go on a cross-country journey? Like, I mean, it was, it was great.
A robot.
Yeah. It does not need a robot, just needs to hold the folders. But, um, so I, that was, that was good. That's all I have.
That's great. Thank you, Jessica. We can count on you for a lively update. Uh, are there any other agenda requests for next meeting?
The one thing we didn't talk about, so we are supposed to talk about surveys this month and just begin the process. Um, given that we, we kind of addressed maybe looking at a third party to do that, do we want to ask for some recommendations for a third party that we can begin the process next month?
Do we need to vote on whether we would actually do the third party? We just need to make an action plan or something like that.
With that task force, the new.
Sounds like an implementation of it.
Yeah.
I would think we ought to postpone it until we have the two dive down meetings on this.
And then we'll just.
We digest this mountain of stuff a little bit first.
We still need to, we have a board scheduled to execute surveys.
Well, it's parent survey, it's teacher survey or staff survey and faculty survey. And then it's student survey. So I think, you know, what I, what we don't want to miss is an opportunity for the, the staff to get or the teachers to get feedback from the students or for the staff to get feedback about what's happening within the students and in the, um, for the onboarding over the next few months because we usually do the survey in November. And it gives, I think, the staff or faculty an opportunity to implement change after the new year. Um, or that's how we, we kind of looked at it, so I don't.
Yeah.
So the survey was always given in November?
Yeah, we did the survey, so in November and May to do part of, you know.
I think we need to prioritize what we're doing and not be driven by a schedule.
Yeah.
Well, no, the, I guess.
Others feel differently.
We, we could certainly leave the survey mechanisms that we have in place status quo and look to redesign or outsource in the future.
Let's not let perfection be the enemy, but, um, we did get information from the survey.
No, no, no argument there. But we do have a mountain of stuff that we are going to be absorbing in the next three or four weeks.
Okay.
That I would think would have an effect on what we want to put out in a survey since we've made such a big deal about all this stuff. So actually then go back to a survey that is, that is not informed by it at all would, uh.
So that, that is a, if you will, a survey that Diane Hammer did in the assessment was a faculty survey, right?
True, yeah.
I think though also if we want to have a point of comparison, you know, here's how things are in the beginning of the year and things, here are things are at the end of the year, that, you know, if we wait till January to conduct that, then we, we, we've lost that, you know, like that purpose can't really be met anymore.
Okay, I apologize. Could I just get, because we're going to continue the conversation, but I just need clarity. So the surveys that you're talking about, are these different than the surveys, types of survey that was given as part of the ed eval system?
Um.
Okay, that's good. I want to make sure that we weren't, that I wasn't.
These are survey looking.
You were doing something different.
That goes out and people.
And I would, I would say that the, the parent and the, and the, um, faculty survey maybe can hold for, for the implementation task force, but I would assume that the school would like to look at some of that baseline information from the students. Um, because it's things at like, um.
How's homework?
How's homework? How's bull, how's bullying? How's this? So it's really about, um, the culture of the students. I know we have a lot going on with the culture, um, with the faculty, but I think we also, we can't not look at what's happening with the students. We need to keep that consistent. And I'm not sure that, um, you know, I think it would be nice to do all the surveys with a third party, but I don't want.
I think it sounds like the student survey should, it sounds like to me that the student survey should continue. There's value in it. There's not controversial in any way. But it also resonates to me that putting a hold on the parent and faculty surveys until we digest the information, because the point that really resonated with me is conducting surveys and then not acting on them is worse than, is the worst possible place to be. So, so I'm suggesting that we continue forward with the student survey with direct, with review from Dr. DeMello.
I'm going to take one here, comment. Go right ahead.
I'm sorry to say, but the student survey that was conducted last year, it was not anonymous, because there were teachers standing behind the students while the students were filming them.
Oh, in computer science lab.
And that is not the way surveys should be done.
No, that's a different survey that you're thinking of.
The survey students did for the faculty.
Yeah, no, we're not talking about that one. That was a different day.
We'll agree. That's another.
Yeah, another issue to be dealt with.
Thank you.
I guess I would just, I would just question, I agree that we should hold off on faculty survey, because we're trying to process a bunch of information, but parents.
I think so, too. I agree. Parents, students.
I'd be interested in the tone, in just the feedback of the parents now.
But we are going to get some feedback from the parents from.
Well, but how many, 10, right? Is it going to be 50 or 100 versus, I think we've had 500 in the past, or 600?
Last time, we had about 500 to 600. It was good, I mean, the timing was great, I guess, because I don't think we've ever received that type of response rate. I think, I mean, really, honestly, the next step is for somebody to tackle looking at those surveys, refining them, trying to, you know, improve some of the questions. And if that's an action item that we feel we need to take for either of those two surveys, we just, I just don't want to wait until October for us to make the decision for something that'll launch in November.
Is it, is it always that the ed committee does those three surveys, or do we only do one of them? Or like, maybe do we need a committee, like a task force to look at the surveys?
Last time, what we did is.
Melissa does all the work.
Sorry. Last time, I drove some of the parent, and then we discussed it. The student, we did an ed committee together, so, and we got feedback from guidance, we got feedback from the administration. It's really important that we, the student feedback is really to guide changes that the administration needs to make. And then, the faculty, we drove that, you and Mike?
Yeah, I asked Mike us for help, I helped him.
Yeah, so, I think that it's, we all have to look at it.
I just wasn't sure the mechanisms that were already in place for that to happen.
I volunteered last year. Are you volunteering at this?
So, are, is, are we okay with both the student and the parent survey?
Yeah, I think, because even with the parent, right, it's going to take a while for us to digest, we really haven't dealt with the whole parent situation. So, I'm fine with going ahead with the parent and this.
Okay.
So.
Give us more data to look at.
Yeah.
And then, if we do move to a third party over time, then they could sort of take over where we've left off, and we haven't really lost anything. Because if we wait to a third party, we'll miss the whole window, so.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, all right. So, Melissa, will you?
I'll drive the parent survey, so I'll be looking for feedback from everyone. I'll send out a note. This is what we did last year. What are we trying to learn? How do we, you know, let's formulate those questions together.
And ed committee does the student one?
Ed committee, we reviewed, we kind of drove some of that, but it wasn't just us writing it. It was, a lot of it was written by the staff and.
I mean, we have something in place. It will be a matter of looking what we already have, seeing what tweaks need to be made, and then putting that out again, right? Because we want to keep a lot of them the same, so we can have that measured.
Overwriting.
There's certain, because, yeah, no, I think we, I think we will.
You know, I also just am getting student government feedback.
We could do that.
We've got a student body.
I think last time, what we said after we got the student survey results were just too many questions. So, we just need to, we need consistent questions in that, you know, we have a baseline, and then we have to kind of look at some of the other questions. But it's really, what are we trying to learn? Do we know that, you know?
Melissa, this is about to be my question. I haven't seen it yet, but I'm wondering, what is the question? What are you trying to learn about?
Yeah, so last time, we, what I've had to do.
Stress, that is one of the issues. Right.
Because there may be, I know you're being time-sensitive about things, and I agree on that, so you get a pre and a post kind of thing, but, you know, there may be some consultants out there who already have some in place that have been developed for some other schools. They're going through some different things, because then, you know, by putting it out to somebody else, some of the other questions and things that have come up are in the hands of somebody else who's, you know.
More experienced.
No, I don't, because I don't know what yours is.
No, it wasn't me.
I didn't mean it that way, but it just, you know.
No, it's more experienced in a school environment.
And it also just removes it from, especially at this particular time, where, you know, there's a lot of questions going on. I just think it helps to create, you know, a removal of us from anything, and just let someone else do it and report it. So, just might be a suggestion to think about whether that's still viable, if we can do it in a time limit.
Can we wait until it's over, or it has to be done now?
We're not, we're actually just deciding to work on it, not to vote. I mean, it's really, you know, I will begin the process of the parent survey, and the ed committee will begin the process of the student survey, just looking at it, knowing, identifying what we want to learn. That's what we're really beginning. Identifying the questions that are the baseline that we want to maintain. And then, we can decide in October that, you know, now we have this information, and we know exactly what we want to get. Now, we can give this to somebody else and let them do it, or we can do it on our own.
Yeah. Okay, that sounds good. All right. Any items for agenda for our next meeting? The only thing I took away was department-level MCAS results.
Part of the finance meeting will have to be worked on.
Okay. And they'll want 15 minutes to go through this point.
Do we anticipate that these dive-down or deep-dive, what do we call them, deep-dive, that those will be done between now and the next board meeting?
That would be the intent.
So, should we have a report from, or sort of?
Yeah.
Tentatively. Tentatively, guys, try to get them scheduled. It may take a while to get the teachers in a room.
We're going to have a principal recruiting task force update, and a ED goals, ED SMART goals update.
Yeah, okay.
I could just yell the doctor, you can take it from me. There'll be a chartering update.
Okay. All right. All right.
When is our next meeting?
October 23rd.
Thursday, it's a Thursday.
Remember that Thursday.
It is, it is, that's right, it's a Thursday.
All right. So, I'm going to announce again the intention to go into executive session. For strategy with respect to collective bargaining and to conduct contract negotiations with non-represented personnel, we will not reconvene into a public session. And in order to go into executive session, I need to have a motion seconded, and then a roll call vote.
I also want to note that I'm not going into executive session, because it's salaries and human stuff, so I'm not, just so everyone knows.
All right.
I can go home.
So, moved.
Chris made a motion to go into executive session under these conditions.
Second.
Melissa is our favorite seconder and motioner tonight, actually.
Motioner, secondaire.
So, I'll take a roll call vote, starting with Chris.
Yes.
Rick.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Allison.
Yes.
Pauline.